All our Bryan County Board of Commissioners February 8th meeting to order, please. If you would stand, we'll have an invocation and a pledge.
If you bow your heads. Dan Lee-Fry, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for all many blessings. Thank you, Lord, to let this group represent Bryan County in this meeting tonight, Lord, and just help us as we go through this meeting to vote what's good for the people of this community, Lord, and just help us with that, Lord, also be with our soldiers here in our community and the ones that are overseas still, Lord, just continue to bless them and their families in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for coming tonight. We have some guests, we have some school board members here, Karen Crupp and Derek. Thank y'all for coming. We appreciate y'all being here, sharing in our meeting. Don't see any other elected officials out there, so thank everybody else for coming. First, we'll need the approval of the agenda for tonight. Need a motion for that, please.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, we need the approval for the January 2022 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the January 2022 meeting minutes.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. All right, we need the approval for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approved the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? Okay, none? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're down to our speaker, Mr. Patrick McDonald. If you come up, sir, just state your name for our records and we'll give you five minutes to speak.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Patrick McDonald. I live at 160 Clark Town Road in Richmond Hill, and I'm here tonight representing the residents along Clark Town Road and all the way over to Carter Town Road who will be impacted from a proposed construction project at the corner of Highway 17 and Clark Town Road. That would put that on probably the southwestern side of that intersection. And I have a few comments. I've sent everybody letters that are on the commission concerning this, and I hope y'all had time to look over it. I probably don't really have a whole lot more new to add, so I'll be brief here this evening, but we don't feel, we are opposed to this proposed project. We don't feel it really brings anything of value to our community in the immediate vicinity. And the reason that four of the residents who are here tonight, but due to limited time available for speaking, I'm representing them as well, that live right in front of where this piece of property is going to be developed, so it's within probably 100, 150 feet of our front door. So right now, we purchased into a development 25 years ago called Bryan Woods or Happy Acres, whatever developer put on it, right behind the Parker's Convenience Store. We bought into a dream of a log cabin community, and that's what we built there. It was our understanding that the land behind us would also be used to develop that community as well as the land across the street should the owner of, the previous owner of the land see fit to do such, and we had talked to somebody that had inherited the land before it was sold to the current owner. It was their proposal to build the log cabin over there also. So our dream was coming true, and then last October, we saw a sign go up out in front that it was proposed to be turned into a mini storage warehouse facility. And we're concerned now that with the loss of this wooded area over there, our dream is starting to vanish. We are concerned about the paving over of that area if those trees are taken down. There are some trees in that area there that might could be considered historic or heritage trees if the tree board determines that. I'm understanding that the tree board was just recently put together in 2021, so they're going to be looking into that. We're also concerned about the traffic increase on Highway 17 into this area, also on Clark Town Road, because it appears that due to the site rendering, we have not seen an actual site plan yet, that the rendering shows a major exit or maybe an entryway 24 foot wide coming into that mini storage area, possibly a secondary exit onto Highway 17, but it looks like the primary entrance is going to be right in front of our homes, probably 100 yards down off of Highway 17. And we already have a lot of traffic coming up and down that road. A lot of people use it for a shortcut from Carter Town Road and all of the other vicinity around behind that area back in there. It's already difficult to get across Highway 17. I'm sure y'all have probably tried to get out of Parker's over there, get across 17, go back to the northbound. There's a proposed R cut being put in by the Georgia DOT, which I don't know if that'll alleviate or make it worse, that just determines to be seen. Having driven a tractor trailer 25 years, I've driven two and a half million accident-free miles all over the country, and something like that is a beast to navigate in an 18-wheeler. People trying to get in and out of the proposed mini storage, if they are in a combination vehicle and they're not used to pulling a trailer, there's a good chance that when they come out of this exit, they're going to fall into a five-foot ditch. That's what's on both sides of Clark Town Road. It's simply not going to be a wide enough if this proposal does go through. We're concerned about the property, our property being devalued due to this business coming in there. It's, we're already losing one neighbor that's moving out because of this. We're concerned about the light and noise pollution. If they put in very bright lights, the last meeting, they said, oh, well, the lights will be turned pointing down. Well, that doesn't mean that it's not going to illuminate our houses on the front if they go with a parking lot, Walmart parking lot look of the bright LEDs. Noise pollution from when you take the trees down in that area to clear it, then all of a sudden we get the noise pollution coming in from Highway 17, which we've noticed recently from when the restoration church was built over to our north side behind our house. We've noticed an immediate increase in noise coming from Highway 17 into the back area of our backyards, and also they've put up a very bright light out there, and now we get the reflection of that light in our backyard, too. The environmental concerns, of course, are drainage from this. If they put in five acres of concrete and asphalt, where's that water going to go? The ditches that are there now, only on the north side of Clark Town Road, that carries all the water down off of Highway 17. We've had all of our driveways wash out in the past couple of years due to the water coming down Highway 17, and Parker's diverted the water from Highway 17 passing underneath Clark Town Road farther south down Highway 17 to Hope Creek. They diverted that when the culvert was obstructed and turned all the water now down running underneath the north side of Clark Town Road. Nothing runs down on the south side of Clark Town Road. And then, of course, once it goes down there, there's no place for it to go. There's nothing down there but residential areas, a low area. Our neighbor, Mr. Mark Crabbe, who lives at 260 Clark Town Road, has had his home flooded due to all the water coming down there, and that wasn't even during a hurricane. That was a simple three days of spring rain. If we do have a hurricane and these trees are removed, there goes our wind barrier and exposes our homes to the full brunt of a wind coming from that direction. We're also concerned about any chemical spills that might take place on this proposed development. There's no telling what somebody might store in there, chemicals, gasoline, if that stuff leaks out, where's it going to go? Also, we don't-
Okay, so just wrap, if you don't mind, right? It's about five, six minutes, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'll wrap up then. We are all supposed to be good stewards of the land. That's our task while we're here, is to pass it on better than what we left it as, and we don't feel that this brings anything to the neighborhood other than the benefit of a small group of people. We'd like to see it remain a beautiful sight driving into Bryan County from the south side. Other things, but I just am out of time, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're on to, we don't have any public hearing tonight, so we're on to our community development, non-public hearing, which will be voting on. And the first item up is Z 252-21, the Billy Meadows' second reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning for map of 6.5 acres parcel 0422-074-01.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to announce that I'll be refusing myself in consideration of this item afterwards.
Okay. And that's noted. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, so this item was on your agenda last month on January 18th. We held the public hearing with this board, and staff presented the staff report, the staff recommendation, as well as the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission. At that meeting, if you'll recall, you ended up deferring this item to this meeting, and so I am prepared tonight to give a recap on any of the staff report and findings, if you'd like for me to do so. And I do have the applicant here with us this evening who is prepared to address you and respond to any of the comments that were heard at the public hearing last month. And so with that, I really turn it over to you to ask what additional information you might need to see from us this evening.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Amanda, one thing that was raised in information from Mr. McDonald was concern with gas pipeline that's running along Clark Town Road. Can you kind of elaborate on that for us a little bit?
Yes, I'm aware of his concern about the Atlanta Gas Pipeline that runs, I believe it's down Highway 17 and then Clark Town Road. As addressed with him, generally, we start to identify those issues during the site development portion of a project, whenever the site civil plans are completed and submitted. Those type of lines and utilities have to be represented on an existing conditions plan as part of that plan set. It would also then at that point be the engineer records responsibility to make sure that any development plans that might impact that utility are coordinated with that utility. So I do know that the applicant's engineer is here this evening. He may be able to further address that, but generally, those are things that would be addressed during the site development process.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, we'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z 250-21 rezoning parcel 0471-001 to the following conditions. A Georgia DOT permit is approved and a TDA is completed and approved.
My second.
Second, any discussion? No discussion?
If I may, Chairman, just ask for a point of clarification with those recommended approvals. Staff did revise to provide a little bit more clarity through those conditions, and those were presented with the staff report last month, and so I just want to draw everybody's attention. As displayed on the screen, there's more specified conditions that read that the required permits approvals from the Georgia Department of Transportation shall be obtained prior to approval of any site development plans for the site, and that a revised traffic impact assessment shall be submitted to and approved by the county's engineering director prior to approval of any site development plans for the site. And we clarified and specified with those conditions, just to make clear the timing at which we would want to see those things completed. We felt like the first version of those conditions didn't convey that. So with that, I would ask if you would choose to maybe consider those as amended conditions to your motion.
Okay, do you want to, yeah, you stop that, or you want to read that all again?
Under the recommended-
I would say, and I would defer to Legal on how this should be done, that I believe a simple reference to the revised staff recommended conditions.
That's fine.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve case Z 250-21 and the rezoning parcel 0471-001 to the following conditions upon staff's revised recommendations. Thank you.
My second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing, no discussion, or any, no more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So that's three to one. Okay, that motion carries. All right, next up is the CUP 174-21, Billy Meadows' conditional use permit for mini storage facility on parcel 0422-74-01.
And so this is the associated item that accompanies the prior rezoning request. This is specific to the use for the mini storage facilities. As presented to you last month, the applicant submitted this conceptual plan showing the two-faced approach for those mini storage facilities, and so this is what is to be considered with this specific request. And as with the prior request, the applicant is here if there's any additional information or follow-up that you need from your tabling last month.
Amanda, I have a question.
Would you make a motion first, and then we'll have discussion?
Okay. Is there any changes in this, in special conditions to this?
So we just carried over the same conditions from the rezoning.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP number 174-21 for the conditional use to the following conditions, based on staff's special revisions conditions. Second.
I think that gets the point across.
Yeah. Put that in there.
As presented.
As presented. Thank you.
My second.
Second, on that, any discussion?
We're going to make sure that, it looks like this thing's probably going to go through. We're going to make sure that we do whatever we need to try to screen as much aesthetically so these folks living across the street from this are going to get a look at some trees and shrubs and not mini storage buildings.
Yeah, so I will say without any additional conditions above and beyond what the ordinance requires, they would have to adhere to the unified development ordinance in terms of those requirements. That will require some landscaping along the front edge of Clark Town Road, which will provide some buffering, and there are requirements that the area has to be fenced. Beyond that, though, if there is a higher expectation, there is nothing that we can enforce without additional conditions being applied. And if there were any consideration for additional conditions beyond and above and beyond the ordinance this evening, I would just make sure that that is clearly communicated with the applicant who is here and that they have some opportunity to address that and acknowledge.
Gene, would you like to bring them up?
Yeah.
Because I've got the same concern.
Okay.
I think we're-
Good evening.
My name's Brandon Purcell. We're with TR Long Engineer and the engineer representing the client, Ms. Ashley Bowlin. What specifically would you have in mind, or?
Well, I mean, we've got many stores right out here in front of us, and it's just not very pretty looking. And if I had to sit in my front yard and look at that every day, I probably wouldn't be too happy.
Yes.
If I used to have woods across the street. So, I mean, I don't know, something that's going to be a visual blind fairly early in the process, not some little scrubby pine trees. It's going to take 20 years to be something that does a little bit of hiding.
If I may speak, just really quickly to address a few things about this. We are, my name's Ashley Anderson-Bowlin, so we are the original owners. Our grandfather bought this property 60 years ago. We inherited it. This is our home place. So we intend to, you know, adhere to the county and the guidelines, but also to the community in which we live. So, and the neighbors, those are our grandparents' friends and their families and grandchildren along Clark Town Road. These are people that we grew up with. You know, so we want to be good stewards of the land, but we also want to make it look nice, and it is part of our home. So yes, it is going to be a commercial site, but we plan to make it, you know, a little bit more as residents and lifelong residents of the community. So yes, we will have it looking nice at this point. We are going to follow the guidelines, but it will look better than expected. What that's going to look like right now, I can't really say and give you the names of the trees and the plants, but, you know, that's our home place. So yes, it would look nicer than what we would expect, and that's the expectations we have for ourselves going into this venture.
Mr. Purcell, do you envision any type of along Clark Town Road, a smaller berm of anything that may shield that? What are your thoughts of that? I've had some discussion with Mr. Meadows that while this is a mini storage, and I think Commissioner Wallace made a comment at the last meeting, that, you know, we may not be gilding head and not allow it to come from, but we certainly would like for it to have an appearance.
As far as a berm, no plans for a berm itself. Lot of the larger trees, to try to go towards the tree quality points, we would like to leave, to a degree, you know. We clean up around it, wouldn't want scrub bushes everywhere around, because this is a facility we won't invite people into. So we want to keep it nice and looking fresh to people who actually want to, you know, come and visit and use the facility. But no type of berm on there.
And I think we can address this again when they, when this plan comes in, right? Lee, or Amanda, excuse me?
We're going to be limited by what the UDO says.
That's right. From this point forward, their next step in the process would be to enter into the site development phase. They would have to submit their site development plans, but those are typically just reviewed at a staff level. So nothing would require that to come back to this body.
But you can't require more than what the UDO requires.
That's right.
Right. It doesn't require a berm.
Right. That's right.
So what would you recommend, Amanda, that we, I mean, without looking at this, this is kind of between a rock and a hard place. We're saying that we'd like to dress it up to where it does have a little more aesthetic and looks to it. Is there a suggestion or recommendation for this?
So, I'm going to approach the podium, I'm sorry. Just so I can speak in the microphone. So with this, I'm always very cautious to try to apply a condition on the fly, especially whenever we're talking about specific requirements or recommendations for increasing landscaping. One thing, though, that I think we might could consider, and what might be a suitable option for you, is if you're okay with the use and it going through the general site development process, then you might can condition this approval on the requirement for a landscape plan to maybe come back through this body for review. That is not something that's ordinarily required, but it would just give one additional level of review. I think in doing that, though, you'd have to be very careful in still applying some type of reasonable approach to how you're reviewing that landscape plan, because at no point, at that point, can you, can you take away anything that you've already granted them approval for. And I'll look to Legal to see if he feels like that would be acceptable as well, but I think that that might be an option to consider.
It's an option if they agree with it.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the-
Applicant, yeah.
Okay. Do they agree with it?
I'd have to speak with my, the partner.
Well, and none of this is saying we don't believe you.
Right.
I mean, that's not that, I just feel like-
I know.
You know, I'm trying to put myself in-
Look out for the community that's around.
-these folks' shoes, and, you know, progress is going to happen along, there's no question about that. But if we can minimize the impact to them, and I'm sure y'all, y'all will, but I mean, I just, I wish, I wish there was some way, but I understand we can't go above what the UDO says. I just, I-
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything else? Okay, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
We've had a motion and a second. So no more discussion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, that's three to one vote. Thank you, that passes. All right, next up is the PUD 171-6 Coleman Company LLC on behalf of Turtle Landing Investments. And this is just the first reading, so there will be no vote on this.
Yeah, so this is the first reading for a PUD amendment for the Magnolia Hill and Wexford subdivisions, which were approved under the Magnolia Hill planned unit development. This was approved back in October of 2016. Specifically, whenever this PUD was approved, it was approved based off of a master plan that showed the general location of residential uses, and was approved with certain conditions, one of which was to install a connector trail. With this request, the applicant is requesting to relocate those residential uses, or one in particular. This is the site showing the Magnolia Hill and Wexford subdivisions highlighted. The original concept plan showed that general location where those residential lots would be, and then with the approval of the PUD in 2016, there was that added condition to install a connector trail to the rear, which they are asking to remove, and then relocate one single family home to that back portion identified as an out parcel. So this is what's going to be considered with this request. Again, this is not being brought forward to you this evening for- And then the plan is to bring it back to this board at your meeting in April, when you are back in Richmond Hill.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Thank you, Amanda. The next one is the Z256-21 Vicki Hitt. It's the first reading order to amend the zoning map for 5.01 acres, parcel 62-045.
So, this is a first reading for a rezoning of approximately five acres located on Rathlin Road that is currently zoned A5, and they are requesting RR 2.5 in order to be able to subdivide this into two lots for single-family homes. And again, this is just the first reading. The public hearing for planning and zoning is scheduled for February 15th, and the public hearing with this board for March 8th. And I can answer any questions.
You may have any questions about that? No questions? All right. Thank you. The next is item Z258-21 Harry Farrell. First reading of orders to amend the zoning map for 5.01 acres, parcel 62-045.
So, this is a first reading for a rezoning of approximately five acres located on Rathlin Road that is currently zoned A5, and they are requesting RR 2.5 in order to be able to subdivide this into two lots for single-family homes. And again, this is just the first reading. The public hearing for planning and zoning is scheduled for February 15th, and the public hearing with this board for March 8th. And I can answer any questions.
You may have any questions about that? No questions? All right. Thank you. The next is item Z258-21 Harry Farrell. First reading of orders to amend the zoning map for one acre parcel number 063-037.
This is a first reading for a rezoning as well. The property is currently zoned R15, single-family residential, and the applicant would like to rezone to RR 1.5 in order to be able to combine it with an adjacent lot and construct a single-family home. This is the first reading with the public hearing with planning and zoning scheduled for February 15th and the public hearing with this board on March 8th.
Anybody having questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All right, thank you. Next one up is a sidewalk waiver for West Point Development. And this will, we will be voting on this.
Yeah, so this item does require an action. So, this is a request of Westport Development Owners LLC. They acquired what was previously referred to as the Herbert Wernell Tract, and this is located on Highway 80 and is part of that North Bryan Industrial Development Region. They are requesting to have the requirement for five-foot-wide sidewalks to be removed from their development. The option to waive this was amended into our ordinances back in September of last year, and it gives this board the ability to waive that requirement. With the Westport Development, there's one main spine road that goes through the center of the property and between the five buildings that are being proposed. By ordinance, the typical road section would require five-foot-wide sidewalks, and that is where they are requesting for that requirement to be waived. This board has only heard one other request similar to this. That was for the Van Trust Development on the Kelly Tract, and you did grant approval of that sidewalk waiver.
Okay. Taking a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the sidewalk waiver for Westport.
Second. Second. Okay, any discussion? No discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, hearing none, that motion passes. Okay, Ben, you're up.
Item one is Transportation Improvement Contribution Agreement with SJC Properties Incorporated. They intend to develop a certain property on Lot 2A within Phase 1 of Interstate Center Industrial Park on Oral Cow Parkway. As such, they and Bryan County agree that certain transportation improvements be necessary at the intersection of Interstate Center Boulevard and Oral Cow Parkway in US 280 in order to meet the anticipated traffic demands for proposed development. County has engaged their engineers to design and permit a traffic signal and associated improvements at this intersection, and SJC Transportation Contribution Agreement memorializes the scope, terms, and conditions and the monetary contribution for the construction of these improvements as identified within the book here. Our recommendation is authorize the chairman to execute the Transportation Improvement Contribution Agreement between the board and the developer, SJC Properties Incorporated.
Motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the chairman to execute the Transportation Improvement Contribution Agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Bryan County and SJC Properties Inc.
Second. Second. Any discussion on that? And I will say that this, we're going to do this to all the properties there so we can get the developers to help pay for some of the improvements in that area for transportation. So, this will be, as developers come in, we're going to do this with all the developers so people know we're getting this, kind of getting it done before, kind of get out ahead of it. Anyway, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next, Ben, is the Belfast-Keller Road Roundabout Design Task Order.
Yeah, item two is the Belfast-Keller Roundabout, Road Roundabout Design Task Order in conjunction with a new high school located at Belfast-Keller Road. The Bryan County Board of Education engaged Thompson-Hutton to prepare a transportation impact analysis for their development. The TIA identified that two of the proposed accesses for the school would necessitate improvements along Belfast-Keller Road at the locations due to the anticipated increases in traffic volumes from the school and existing traffic during peak hours. In order to mitigate those impacts, TNH identified roundabout improvements at each location, one roundabout to be located at intersection of Cranston-Bluff Road and one at the main school entrance located to the east behind, or between Cranston-Bluff Road and the roundabout at Belfast River Road. This proposed roundabout locations have previously been included in the recently adopted Belfast-Keller Road Access Management Plan, and of course, they're going to play an integral role in efficient operation and future build-out of the corridor. So, our recommendation is to approve the attached Scope of Services and authorize the chairman to execute the corresponding task order number 6D3 for engineering and design services in conjunction with these two roundabouts.
Okay, any motion on that, guys?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Thompson-Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the chairman to execute task order number 63 in the amount of $421,700 for engineering design phase services in conjunction with the Belfast-Keller Road South Bryan High School roundabouts. As presented.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The only one who's spending money.
Oh.
You want to raise your hand?
All in favor, raise your right hand. We're spending money, I forgot, guys. Thank you, Dan. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Six minutes.
I know. All right, Ben.
Item three is...
Next is the Water and Sewer Agreement.
The amended and restated Water and Sewer Service Agreement for CRG Development Services. They intend to develop property located in Phase 2 of Interstate Center Industrial Park, lots actually 1B, 1C, and 1D. As such, CRG desires certain commitments from Bryan County regarding water and sewer service for development. Bryan County and CRG entered in a Water and Sewer Service Agreement on November 9th, 2021. The agreement memorialized the cost, the connection cost for this Water and Sewer Service. CRG is now requesting the agreement to be amended to revise the development phasing schedule and corresponding schedule for payment of capital recovery fees.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the chairman to execute the amended and restated Water and Sewer Agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Bryan County and CRG Development Services LLC.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next is Audit to Contract Award.
Item four is the appointment of an auditor for the county for 2021 annual audit. Georgia law requires counties to be audited annually by our size. The county did an RFP for external auditors with county government experience, and the following firms submitted proposals, as Nicholas Colley and Associates, Malden &amp; Jenkins, Lanier, Dill, and Procter. Our recommendation is considering the appointment of an auditing firm for the 2021 annual audit and approve the county administrator to execute the appropriate contract and letter of engagement.
Okay, we need a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Malden &amp; Jenkins as the auditing firm for the 2021 annual audit and approve the county administrator to execute the appropriate contract and the letter of engagement.
Second. Second. Any discussion on that? No discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. T-Splas 2 intergovernmental agreement, chief?
Item five is to consider the approval of the T-Splas number 2 intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Richmond Hill and Pembroke and Bryan County, of course. Bryan County currently has a single-county transportation special local option sales tax in place that helps fund transportation-related capital outlet projects. In order for T-Splas tax rate to be in excess of .75, an intergovernmental agreement must be executed among the county and the qualified cities, those being Richmond Hill and Pembroke. If an IGA is entered, the tax rate can be up to 1%. The funds are then distributed in accordance with the executed intergovernmental agreement. Cities of Richmond Hill and Pembroke have approved that IGA, and the rate of distribution will be 56.5% to Bryan County, 35% the city of Richmond Hill, and 8.5% to the city of Pembroke. Our recommendation is to approve the T-Splas 2 intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Richmond Hill and Pembroke.
Need a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the T-Splas 2 intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Richmond Hill and Pembroke.
Second. Any discussion? Discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I will say it was really nice that was settled in a couple of hours meeting in this room instead of drawing out armrests with that, so that was great.
That's right.
It's an hour and 16 minutes.
Item six on the agenda is considering adoption of a resolution calling for a T-Splas 2 election to be held May 24, 2022. Projections indicate that tax collections for the current T-Splas will reach its ceiling of $27.5 million in 2022. In order for the collection to continue uninterrupted, a T-Splas 2 referendum will need to be passed by the voters of Bryan County during an election to be held on May 24, 2022. This proposed 1% sales tax for transportation-related capital improvements will be imposed for a period of five years or until $80 million is collected. This resolution calls for the election, specifies the purpose of T-Splas, specifies the period of time the tax be imposed, and also specifies the estimated cost of facilities, and seeks approval to issue general obligation debt if needed, and approves the form of the ballot to be used in such election. Our recommendation is to adopt a resolution calling for the T-Splas 2 election to be held on May 24, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion adopting a resolution calling for T-Splas 2 election to be held on May 24, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Item seven on the agenda is the Annual Motorola Service Agreement. Sheriff and the 911 Center are requesting approval of an annual service agreement with Motorola. This contract includes all labor and parts for any equipment failures. This annual service contract cost is $99,902. This is a sole-source purchase with Motorola since all the equipment is Motorola already, and they are the original equipment manufacturer. Our recommendation is authorize the sheriff and 911 to execute and sign the annual service agreement with Motorola.
Need a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the sheriff and the 911 Center to execute and sign the annual service agreement with Motorola.
Second, that motion? Take any discussion? We are updating our 911 system, so this is just part of it. Good to have our sheriff doing his job out there. Anyway, all in favor, since we're spending money, raise your right hand. Approve? Okay. Oppose? Okay, that motion carries. All right, next is a resolution for local litigation for board of elections.
Item eight is a Motorola service upgrade agreement, another 911 issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Again, the sheriff and 911 center's requesting approval of system upgrade agreement with Motorola. This upgrade is for the overall regional network, which is upgraded every two years. This contract includes all upgrades to the PCs, the routers, switches, and software at the 911 center, the tower sites as well, and of course, Richmond Hill and Pembroke, their interface with us. This is a four-year service agreement that costs $259,632 for four years. This is a sole-source purchase, again, with Motorola since our system is currently outfitted with Motorola. Our recommendation is authorize the sheriff and 911 center to execute and sign this four-year system upgrade agreement with Motorola.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the sheriff and 911 center to execute and sign the four-year system upgrade agreement with Motorola. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Now, a resolution for local litigation.
Item nine is to consider adoption of resolution, request local legislative delegation introduce a bill to increase the number of members on the board of elections and registrations. Currently, the Bryan County Board of Elections and Registrations has three members. Since Bryan County is the fastest-growing county in the state of Georgia, and its population has increased from just over 30,000, almost 45,000 in a 10-year period, a desire has been expressed by the members of the board of commissioners to increase the number of members from three to five. This resolution requests that a member of the legislative delegation submit a bill to the General Assembly to increase the number of members of this board from three to five, and Chairman Ron Stevens has agreed to sponsor this legislation. So, our recommendation, if this is the wish of the board, is to adopt the resolution requesting this action by our local delegation in the General Assembly.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion adopting a resolution requesting the legislative delegation introduce a bill in the General Assembly to increase the number of members on the Bryan County Board of Elections and Registration from three to five.
Second. Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number 10, selection of consultant for CBDG grant.
Item 10, selection of consultant for the Community Development Block Grant. Bryan County wishes to submit a Community Development Block Grant to Department of Community Affairs this year. In order to do so, of course, you must have a grant writer and administrator. And back in December, Bryan County published an RFQ, Request for Proposals, seeking a firm to do so. It established also a selection committee whose members were Chairman Infinger, Sally Schuman, the Senior Citizens Director, and Eric Von Otten, our Special Projects Manager. The selection committee recommends the approval of Southern Prosperity Consulting as a consulting firm to write and, if awarded, administer the 2022 CDVG grant.
Need a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to select Southern Prosperity Consulting as a consulting for the 2022 CDVG grant.
Second. Second. Any discussion on that? No discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, down to the IDR Forest Main Pump Station Contract Award.
Item 11 is the IDR Forest Main Pump and Pump Station Contract Award. In conjunction with CIG Chesterfield Water and Sewer Agreement, Bryan County is committed to design, permitting, and construct a regional forest made in order to serve the GICC development as well as the North Bryan Industrial Development Region, what we call the IDR and the surrounding areas. This project consists of a forest main, a regional pump station facility to pump wastewater, and it will originate at the North Bryan, IDR-adjacent US 80, and terminate at a planned regional transfer station located in Interstate Center at the head of the Bryan County. Item 11 is the IDR Forest Main Pump and Pump Station Contract Award. In conjunction with CIG Chesterfield Water and Sewer Agreement, Bryan County is committed to design permitting and construct a regional force main in order to serve the GICC development as well as the North Bryan Industrial Development Region, what we call the IDR and the surrounding areas. This project consists of a force main, a regional pump station facility to pump wastewater, and it will originate at the North Bryan IDR-adjacent US 80 and terminate at the planned regional transfer station located in Interstate Center at the head of the Bryan County, City of Savannah Regional Force Main. Bids were received for the project in January 26th, with the lower bidder being McLendon Enterprises from Badaia. You have a bid tabulation. Our recommendation is consider the approval of IDR Force Main and Lift Station Construction Contract to McLendon Enterprises in the amount of just under $5 million there. You've got that amount and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate the project.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the IDR Force Main and Lift Station Construction Contract to McLendon Enterprises in the amount of $4,912,953.75, and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate the project.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Again, this is putting infrastructure in, so good for the county. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Ben. We are down to our section for public comments. I'm going to see if anybody signed up. And if you have signed up to speak, you can come up, state your name, and we'll give you five minutes to speak. Thank you, Lori. So Patrick McDonald, we've heard from you, sir. So thank you.
Just one other thing. I'd like to say, not in regards to the first item discussed earlier, but that I would like the commissioners to consider some type of traffic device, control device at Belfast Keller Road and Highway 17, because the increased amount of traffic coming up and down through there, people are traveling at high rates of speed in excess of 70 miles an hour. There's been a lot of accidents up and down through that area. I would just like for you gentlemen to consider something in that area.
Okay, and you know that, that's a state highway, so we don't, we can't consider any, we don't do any recommend, we can recommend to the state, but that's a decision for the state. That is a state highway.
All right, well, I just thought the county engineer would maybe say something.
Yeah, we can recommend. Yeah, we can recommend.
We have had some discussions of that.
Yes.
So, of that, actually, we're actually, not in a road corridor.
Oh, yeah.
We're actually doing a study from truck stop right near Richmond Hill all the way to the county line.
Yes.
Just a holistic approach, just to kind of see what things are like and what can be approved, and certainly a traffic signal has been discussed, but it's.
Thank you.
DOT is aware.
Yes. Thank you, Dallas, yeah, for saying that's what I was going to say, so, yeah. So we are, we are, we're aware of it, and we're working with them to try to come up with a solution. Okay, Cheryl Sanders.
I'm calling. Thank you both.
Okay. All right. Jim Gardner.
Yeah, no, I don't want to speak.
You don't want to speak either? Did y'all just sign up, just come to the meeting? That's fine, hey. Olivia Tullock.
Stan, I would like to speak.
Okay. If you just come and state your name, and we'll give you five minutes.
I would just like to say that I'm very disappointed in y'all for voting to affirm the rezoning with the mini warehouse in a neighborhood that you don't live in, so you don't understand the distress that our neighbors are causing or feeling for that. I want you to understand that when you drive through Bryan County, and when you drive through Richmond Hill, and you look around and people are visiting you, they go, mm, this is really nice, and we'd like that to stay that way when people are visiting. We don't want it to go, when you're driving down 17, and you're going through Garden City, and you all of a sudden start thinking, ooh, it's not so nice out here, did I take a wrong turn? We don't want that feeling where we live, because we moved here because it's nice. We'd like it to stay that way. And I would just like to say I'm very disappointed in that decision. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments.
Would anybody else like to speak? No? Thank you again, Derek and Karen, for coming. Would any commissioners have any, did any commissioners have any comments?
I'll say this, for that, for the mini storage, I will certainly participate and pay very close attention to make sure that it is what it is, but we want it to appear and to appease more than just the mini storage. So you've got my word on that, and there's another project right down 17, and I feel like if we're going to approve that, we need to monitor it and stay involved, just as if we want to. But you've got my word on that.
Any other comments? Harry, then we'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, thank y'all all for coming.